Roll call, please.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Lazara.
Here.
Alderman Shockey.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
I'm here.
Say it.
Here.
Thank you. Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Okay, declare quorum present. Please stand and join in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item is approval of minutes. City Council minutes, May 3, 2012. Do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Second.
I'll second it.
Any comments, corrections, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Next, do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? Yes, if you can go to the podium and state your name, please.
Hi, I'm Gina Swentek. I live at 262 Prospect Avenue.
Okay, Shirley. Go ahead. Go ahead.
I'd like to propose a few things on Prospect Avenue. I have a couple petitions I'd like to put in for parking limited to one side of the road between Potter and George Street as well as speed bumps on the same road.
And you have the petitions with you?
I do have two petitions signed for each one of them.
Sorry, your microphone wasn't on.
Oh, that's okay.
Is there anything else you wanted to say on the matter? This is about Prospect. I believe you sent the email about a month ago.
I did send an email, yes, I did. So I followed up by getting petitions. I talked with residents on both sides of the road, got some information on them about further accidents that have happened on the road. There was just a major accident Saturday evening as well that happened. So I just wanted to bring this to everyone's attention and hopefully we can get something done on that street to make it safer.
Chief, you want to say something?
No, she'll give it to me.
Okay. If you can bring those up, we'll...
Sure.
Give those to the attorney and authentic clerk. Jeff, you want to put this on the agenda for public health and safety?
Thank you.
And we'll put this on... Is your phone number on there so we can contact you when it's on the meeting?
Not. What is it? Did you name it?
Yeah, it's on the bottom. They're all signed and all raised.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll put that on a public health and safety... Alderman Winger. Go ahead.
While this resident is here, I believe that there's been some incidents that she wanted to share with city council to truly demonstrate the severity of this situation. Do you have some instances that you've already collected or do you want to come back at a different time for that?
Well, I do have some. I mean, like I said, Saturday was just the most recent one. There was a car parked two houses away from me at 272. A guy came and hit flat back end. Radiator burst in the car. Airbags went off on the car. This is a 20 mile per hour street, so obviously the guy was driving much faster. Both cars had to be towed. The guy had a baby in the backseat. He actually took the kid out and ran down the street, left the scene of the accident that did the hitting back in December. There was also another serious accident on the same block on the east side of the road. There was a gentleman taking his four-year-old daughter out of the car and a car came, hit him behind. He was parked strong enough to push the vehicle up on top of the man and the car seat got thrown out. Now, me and my husband heard it and ran down there. I'm a nurse. He's a ex-fire department. So we both were on the scene first before I was calling 911 as I was running down the street. The man, luckily, he wiggled himself out from the car, but the girl in her car seat flown on the side. Her face was all scraped up, just screaming. I mean, this is a small side street. This should not be happening. So those are two of the more severe ones that I myself have witnessed recently.
Anything for that?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Make sure Jeff gets that number so we can contact. Does anybody else wish to be heard? Okay. Be no more... I have no written communiques. Mayor's report. This is a proclamation to honor Eagle Scout Gus Simolas. Okay. Whereas the Boy Scouts of America is a vital force in the development of youth through its many programs which encourage the ability of its members to do things for themselves and especially for others, and whereas one of major objectives in the scouting program is to develop citizenship through community involvement and in addition to working for citizenship merit badges, scouts are encouraged to participate in community service projects. And whereas Gus Simolas is a member of Boy Scouts of America and not only proven himself to be an outstanding member, but has attained the highest honor bestowed on a scout, the Eagle Scout Award. And whereas the Eagle Scout Award is a distinction that will follow him throughout life and will be a beacon to others of the leadership quality and commitment this young man has shown. On behalf of the City of Wood Dale and the Police Department, we have a plaque right here. We're not going to let him off that easy. You had to do a project to become an Eagle Scout. Maybe you want to speak about that a little bit?
My project was at my church, First Presbyterian Church of Arlington Heights, and I worked on it over last summer. And it was repairing 31 windows at my church. We had to scrape the windows of the old paint and sand them down, then prime them again, and then repaint them. So I went out three different times with three different groups, with some family members, some church members, and then a group of scouts came on with me. And overall, it went really well, and I'm just glad I could do it for my church.
Nice job.
Thank you.
If you could, the council would like to shake your hand. And his name is on the plaque with all the other Troop 65 members.
Everybody knows him.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Nice job.
Congratulations. Next up, a city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two items. I just want to remind residents at home Prairie Fest is rapidly approaching. August 9 through the 12th, you can now get your discounted carnival passes at City Hall, the Wood Dale Park District, and on wooddale.com. My second item is a reminder to residents that brush collection will start the week of Monday, May 21st. Concludes my report.
Thank you. Nothing on the consent agenda. Committee Chairman reports planning and zoning. Alderman Winger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have one item on the agenda, and it is to make a resolution seeking to approve an agreement between the City of Wood Dale and Uller Consulting LLC for the preparation of a conceptual vision plan for the city's public spaces. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions? Alderman Shockey.
With your permission, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Or maybe a few. First of all, I understand that this company came to Wood Dale to offer their services. We didn't go out and look for bids or anything?
No, there was no bids on this. This is professional services.
Can I ask what committee it went through? What subcommittee?
I believe Streetscape did discuss it.
Not that I know of.
There was some discussion. I'm not sure if they had a full discussion.
I believe it was referenced. I don't know if it was officially passed by Streetscape Committee. I don't attend that committee. I don't believe it was on the agenda, but it might have been as a topic.
I don't believe there was anything on the agenda in Streetscape.
Mr. Malone? Your part is Street.
I did miss one meeting, but I don't recall it.
It was brought to us at Streetscape from Mr. Clicker, and he described the scope of services to us, and we did vote as a committee to recommend it to you guys at the city council level.
You did. Okay, good. That answers one question. The other question I have is, do we understand what the contract calls for? Could you take one and pass it down? Mike, if you can put that overhead up, I'd appreciate it. I think it's upside down. There we go. Okay. According to the contract, the study area is the architect shall study the area located between School Street and the north, the red line, Central on the east, Irving on the south, and Salt Creek on the west. Now, I mentioned last time, and I think Mr. Coles mentioned it also, there are homes over there. Matter of fact, there's give or take a couple. There's 579 homes, and I don't understand what we're doing studying an area that has 579 homes on it, knowing that we're not going to be changing anything there. Can somebody tell me what part of this thing is possibly in the study?
Mr. Murmish.
Well, I could reiterate what Alderman Shockey said, that we're not, you know, studying homes per se, but a region with homes located within it, not to rezone or anything like that, but, you know, walking paths or community features are all within the scope of services. It's not to change the residential component, just enhance the downtown area around City Hall.
Okay. The vision plan also will examine the pedestrian and bicycle routes beyond the study area that will enhance a greenway trail connecting to the forested area. Now, right along here, that we own part of it, this is all private. I don't understand how we could put any kind of a walking path or bike trail. We haven't been able to do it on the south side of Irving Park Road, yet we're going to pay somebody $26,000 to figure out how to put a bike trail and a walking path? I think what they're looking at is this area here, which we already pretty much, the council has decided what they'd like to do, and about the front street, which we're already working with somebody about fixing the facades. Now, maybe you're talking over here a little bit, is that worth $26,000 for that little bit of, what, four blocks of Irving Park Road? The reason I'm asking is that we've had these studies before. I tried to count up how many we've had since I've been on the council. I think it came to 14. I'm not positive. But we're spending taxpayers' money for a concept that really, if you look at it, we can't do anything with. We can't change any of this. That's all private property. That's private property along the creek. All we can do is work with this little spot and over here, and that's it. And we've been doing that. I don't understand why we should pay another $26,000 to anybody to tell us what we can do with that property. We've had studies about that property already. We've never done anything with it. If somebody can answer those questions for me, I'd be happy to vote on it, but without knowing anything more about it, I don't understand why we should be doing this.
From what I understand, we're just looking to beautify the downtown area. They're going to incorporate some of the forest preserve projects, like I said. Forest preserve naturally has to be approached. You have to have a concept.
We've done that before, and what happened?
Anything else?
No, no, I just, I still don't understand why we're doing it.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
In Ross's absence, he probably could explain it better than I could, but apparently the gentleman that's heading up this group is a pretty knowledgeable guy, someone that you probably wouldn't get these services this cheap regularly. But there are some areas, Dan, I'd have to disagree with you, that you can't say is totally untouchable. I think you need to look long-term, which is the problem when you do these plans, is nobody wants to look long-term. Everybody thinks it's going to happen tomorrow, and a lot of times, these plans are conceptual. Now, take this area, Commercial to Irving, where the property depths are too narrow to do any developing, and maybe over 20 years, as those properties become available, maybe you pull them and you come up with a plan to slowly make them public properties. When you get a big enough area, nobody has to move out of there that doesn't want to, but over the long term, you can end up with a depth of properties that's developable in the long run. So there are some things that can be looked at long-term that maybe necessarily aren't going to happen tomorrow, but if you plan for them, you can end up with some of the things that a lot of people would like to see in this town that you can't do now because you don't have the depth of property to develop them. So there are some opportunities there that maybe you or I, as residents, can't see that sometimes a person who does a study like this could come up with. So that's kind of the gist of it, but, you know...
I make a comment?
Yeah.
I don't think he's even going to look at the homes that are in that area. It's more the vacant land over by the reservoir, the vacant land over by Wood Dale and Commercial.
I was understanding it was also there, too.
Yeah. We really told them to leave the homes alone. So it's more the vacant properties and some of the properties that, you know, could be utilized, like on Southwest Corner of Wood Dale and Irving, things like that, and throwing in some type of walkway. Naturally, if you're going through somebody's backyard, that's not going to happen. They're not going through somebody's backyard.
That was just the conversation we had.
Thank you. So what really compelled me to support this project is that while the primary focus is within the red boundaries there and in the vacant areas, the open space that, and it could use a facelift, that it's my understanding that conceptually, while it won't be to the detail level, but it will be going south to tie in along Salt Creek as it winds down south, and then goes to the other forest area, which there's a canoe launch there. It's a very nice passive recreation area. So if we start looking at the expanded concept, I'm... That's what really sold me on this. And also that going south, all the buyout lots that are there, that are outside that concept area, that will give a nice attraction to start doing things with those buyout lots. I remember us talking about this 12, 13 years ago. What are we going to do with those? So I think this would be a jumpstart to it. So that is why I'm supporting it. Thank you.
Do you have anything further, Alderman Shockey?
No.
Anybody else? Alderman Coles.
All right. You're talking about a trail along Salt Creek, north of the railroad tracks. There's three or four houses in there that are privately owned that go through the creek. And if I was living in one, I wouldn't want a walkway in my backyard, people walking through the walkway in my backyard. I would put up a fence because that's private property. So as far as I'm concerned, we've had studies on Irving Park when we were talking about TIF areas. That never came true. That was... We went all the way from 83 to Prospect, and we included Georgetown, and nothing was done. That went on a shelf. So as far as I'm concerned, I'm voting no against this. One more small comment. The people that live along here own that property to the middle of the creek. It's not like you can take a strip of it along the creek and say that we're going to put a path over there. They own the property up to the middle of the creek, so there's no way, without their permission, we could ever put any kind of a bike trail there.
Anything further?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah. How did he... How do we come up with this area with all these houses in there?
Honestly, when we spoke the first time with Alderman Winger, Alderman Lazara, Mr. Forrest, Mr. Clicker, myself, and the two gentlemen, we basically set Irving Park to Central, but not the homes, the business areas going west. You could square it off, but the homes are really not included.
So you used Central to Irving?
Central to the creek.
Central to the creek.
I mean...
But you want to use this part... Am I misunderstanding something here? Alderman Winger said it was carrying to the south a little. Am I understanding that correct?
Alderman Winger.
Well, my understanding was, is that, like, not at the detail level, but conceptually, they were going to look at tying in other areas of the city outside of that boundary. Now, what I'd like to do then, in support of the questions here of suggesting that we table this to take another look at the boundaries themselves to make sure that we're all clear. So that is my motion.
I'll second.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
This is for tabling it?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. That's all you have, right, Christine?
That's my report.
Thank you. Public Health and Safety, Alderman Coles.
No report.
Public Works, Alderman E. Wesley.
No report, Mayor.
Finance and Administration, Alderman Shockey.
Yes, sir, I have three items. Number one is a resolution appointing a delegate and that alternative to get delegate to the Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency. Make that in the form of a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Of course, Mayor.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Mayor, I believe the reason why this was brought to our attention is that, at that time, we did not have a HR person, and he was the person that was going to be the person that was going to be in charge of this revolution. So why would we even have to have this now that we have hired a finance... I mean, a... Not a finance, we hire a HR person now. So why would we have this now in place?
Mr. Murmish.
For both the resolution for Irma, Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency, and IPBC, we have two delegates from the city. We have a primary and an alternate. For Irma, the primary would be our new Human Resource Generalist, and our alternate delegate would be our Finance Director. For IPBC, again, we have two delegates. Our primary would be our Finance Director, and our alternate would be our Human Resource Generalist. Reason being, a lot of the IPBC items are more of a budget-related in manner, where they eventually go to our Finance Director in the long run. Compounding that, or not compounding, but the other major reason is that our Finance Director is on the Leadership Committee or some... Which... Is it the leader or what? He's on a committee on the board, so that's why he's the primary delegate.
May I do a follow-up?
Go ahead.
Who was the backup before? Who was it before?
Mr. Wilson was always one of the alternates on both organizations.
But the reason why this came forward is because, simple reason is, the way it was explained to me, because Mr. Wilson was not on it. So, I mean, I just don't know why we have to do two of them. I mean, I'm just a little confused.
Mr. Wilson.
Alderman Wesley, the one you're referring to from a month or so ago is IMRF, which is that one we're not changing as of yet. This is IPBC and Irma, and we have to take Ms. Chepson off and Ed Ms. Petiti on so that we have voting rights should one of us be absent. So there's actually three I acronyms that we have to deal with.
Okay. Mr. Murmish.
What was that committee? I'm sorry. Memory loss.
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Finance and Operations Committee that reports up to the full Board of Directors for IPBC.
Anything further? Roy Wesley? Alderman Roy Wesley, sorry.
By delegating, it doesn't... He's not going to get any extra pay for this, correct?
Mr. Murmish.
Not unless you want to give it to him.
No. Another question is, by doing this, before we had the Finance Director and Human Resource going to the same meetings at the same time, are we going to continue to have that?
There'll be some meetings where they'll both be there, but it would be to our advantage in those instances.
Alderman Wesley.
I'm going to stop there.
Okay. Anybody else? Roll call.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes. Hold on, I'm sorry.
I'll vote for Eugene Wesley.
Yes. Call my brother.
Okay. Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
That passes.
Second item is a resolution authorizing representatives to the Intergovernmental Personnel Benefit Cooperative. Make that in the form of a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any question? Roll call.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
That passes.
The next item is an ordinance authorizing the City of Wood Dale to execute a loan pursuant to the Water Pollution Control Loan Program for the improvement and construction of a wastewater treatment plant. In the form of a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
And the one other item we'd like to defer to after the executive session. Do I need a motion on that? Approval for it? Okay. What's deferred?
Item four.
Okay. Next up is approval of list of bills, May 17. Alderman Shockey.
Be right with you. Okay. List of bills for 5/17/12. The General Fund, $152,714.69. The Road and Bridge Fund, $2,225.67. The Motor Fuel Tax Fund, $2,673.50. The Tourism Fund, $16,014.92. Capital Projects Fund, $105,769.70. Equipment Replacement Fund, $2,014. Commuter Parking Lot Fund, $2,014.25. The Water and Sewer Capital Projects, $73,000. The Water and Sewer Capital Projects, $73,847.71. And the Water and Sewer Fund, $62,895.14. For a total of all funds of $418,369.58.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Alderman Shaki.
This is, well, as Finance Chairman, which I was appointed to, I've changed a little bit to read out at least the funds and the amount. But I was given a list of the different vendor and fund numbers. And even after this amount of time, I have, pardon my language, one heck of a time trying to find out where it belongs. I'd like to make a suggestion. I'm wondering if the finance director can give us this information, general fund and listing all the items for the general fund. Road and Bridge Fund, listing the items there. In other words, listing each one, so we know where it goes and what it belongs to. This will save a lot of questions and a lot of curiosity in my mind when I see dollars being spent, and I'm not sure exactly where it goes. So, if we can have that as a recommendation to staff, I think it would be helpful for everybody.
Mr. Mermish and Mr. Wilson are both shaking their heads yes.
Okay, that's all I have.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
That's the end of the bills.
Executive session, we do need an executive session. We will entertain a motion to recess to executive session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're recessed.
Alderman Lazara?
Here.
Alderman Shaki?
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Here.
Mayor police?
Here. Alderman Shaki, this is your finance. Right, it goes back to finance, correct?
I'd like to pass this down to Alderman Wesley. It's his word.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a revolution.
A resolution?
I'll make a revolution approving the economic...
A motion.
A motion, I'm sorry. A motion or revolution approving the economic agreement with L Lightning Company LLC and Gullul Family and Trust for redevelopment of 880 North Wood Dale Road in certified agreement, including sharing of retail tax revenue. That will be my motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Questions? Roll call.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
That passes. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.